Eight P M. Good evening and welcome to the December seventeen twenty twenty four Salma Unified School District Board Meeting is now in session. Roll call, Mr. Fedor?
Here.
Mrs. Kessler?
Here.
Uh, Mr. Medina is not here and I hope he's doing okay, uh, let her be sick. Uh, Mrs. Dorte?
Yeah.
And I'm here myself and we're gonna move into right into the administration of the U T O F Office for Board of Trustee and Mr. Gomes.
So thank you all for being here tonight. I want to start tonight first with our first candidate who will not be a candidate, she will be a board member tonight. Stella Pedron Duarte and she will be sworn in by her daughter who's coming up, so I believe she's gonna do it here in the microphone.
Have sister come up too.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear and affirm, sorry.
That I will support and defend?
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
The Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies?
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic?
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith?
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance?
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States?
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely?
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well?
And that I will well.
And faithfully discharge?
And faithfully discharge.
The duties upon?
The duties upon.
Which I am about to enter.
Which I am about to enter.
I would like to call out Narinder Nick Sojota as the candidate for reelection. Raise your right hand. I, Narinder Nick Sojota?
I, Narinder Nick Sojota.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States?
That I uh, support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies?
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic?
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith?
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the Constitution of the United States?
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely?
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation.
Or purple, purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will?
That I will.
Faithfully discharge?
Faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon I uh, to enter.
Thank you very much and you are official. It's now official, congratulations to both of you. We're gonna take a quick pause, there's a little bit of food here and we're gonna take some pictures with the group here. Thank you.
Mrs. Dorte? Meeting is back in session.
Where'd she go? Oh, there she is. She's like you.
Yeah.
Running around.
Yeah.
Enjoy every minute.
All right, well, thank you again and thank you again swearing me in and well as Stella. Um, I'd like to say a few words. I am thankful to everyone who supported and reelected me and I'm honored to, honored to be serving our community with a dedication and a commitment over next four years. Lastly, I'd like to be um, really thanks to the people, uh, special people, my wife, my father, the Sura, C S E A, and all my friends, really appreciate it.
Oh, that's nice.
All right, I'm gonna, we're gonna move into uh, item number four, Resolution F Y twenty five dash twenty five. Uh, the master of declaring a board members elected, Mrs. Gomes?
Whereas California Elections Code, Section fifteen three seventy two, provides that election officials shall prepare a certified statement of the results of the election and submit it to governing bodies within thirty days of the election. The above named districts Salma Unified Governing Board is in receipt of the certified statement of the results of the November fifth two thousand twenty four election from each county elections official applicable to the races for seats on its governing board. Uh, California Education Code fifteen four hundred provides that the governing body shall declare elected to each office voted on at each election under its jurisdiction, the person having the highest number of votes for that office. California Election Code also, also in the fifteen four oh one provides that following such a declaration of election that elections official shall make out and deliver to each person elected as declared by the governing body, a certificate of election signed and authorized by the elections official. Salma Unified declares elected to its governing board with total number of votes listed below from each applicable county, the person Stella Pedron Duarte for area one and Narinder Sojota, area two. Salma Unified requests that Fresno County Elections Official makes out and delivers to each person elected as declared by this governing body. The foregoing resolution was adopted on the seventeenth day today of December two thousand twenty four at a regular meeting and we will take roll call for this one.
All right, we're gonna take a roll call, Mr. Fedor?
Yep.
Mrs. Kessler?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorte?
Yes.
And I'm here myself, yes, and Mr. Medina is absent.
Absent, okay. Okay.
All right, we're gonna move into approval of agenda. May I have a motion to be uh, approve this agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All favor say aye?
Aye.
Anybody pose? All right, we're gonna move into election of officer. Oh, Mr. Medina is in here.
Perfect timing.
I'm so happy you're here.
Oh, welcome.
Oh.
Well, good to see you.
All right.
So we're gonna continue moving into our uh, item number six, election of officers, um.
Five, just five of these.
Yeah.
No, five for the swearing in and this.
Trustees Sojota, myself, assigned the responsibility of the chair to the secretary, Mr. Ed Gomes, the secretary opened the nomination for officer of Salma Unified School District Board of Trustee.
Thank you very much. So first I'd like to remind everyone that we have several key positions to consider for election tonight, board president, board vice president, board clerk. These positions pay, play a crucial role in our governance and will be instrumental in steering our priorities and initiatives that we continue on forward. So the process of the election, I'd like to just outline the process, uh, so we follow tonight's election this way. Nominations, we will first open the floor for nominations for each position. Board members can nominate themselves or their colleagues. We'll then have discussion after nominations, we'll check for any questions or comments. And then for voting, we will then proceed to a vote. If for any reason the person nominated does not receive a first or second, the vote and nomination dies and we continue with an open floor for nominations for that position. So at this time, I will open the floor for nominations for the position of board president.
I make a motion to nominate Nick Sojota for president?
All right, is there a second to it?
Yeah, I'll, I'll second that. Oh, sorry, where you? I was gonna make a motion for me, but it's okay, go for it. Well, okay.
All right, Mr. Fedor seconded, um, we gotta um, take a vote on it?
Are there any other folks who would like to?
Any other nomination for president?
No, I said me, so.
Okay, so we'll open it up for um, Mr. Medina also?
Yep.
Yes.
Yep. So, is there a second to Mr. Medina? Our motion dies?
So with no motion, the dies, that's correct?
Yep.
So, uh, at this moment, let, I'd like to start with you on, um, Mr. Sojota continue on as president?
Um, sure.
Okay, Stella? Yes. Mrs. Kessler?
Yes.
Mr. Sojota?
Yes.
Mr. Fedor?
Yes.
Okay. So with all five voting yes, I would declare Mr. Sojota continuing on as board president. And now I will pass this over to the president, Mr. Sojota, to continue on with the other two areas.
Yeah. Uh, now we are nominated for uh, vice president, um, of the Salma Unified School District Board of Trustee. Uh, is there a motion for vice president?
I'll make a motion to nominate Joel Fedor for vice president.
Is there a second to?
I'll second that.
All right, Mr. Medina has a second to that. And is there another uh, motion for vice president? All right, Mr. Fedor's will stand for the vice president. Um, all favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody pose?
Excuse me.
All right, that was the vice president and now we're gonna move into the um, the clerk, right?
Board clerk.
Board of clerk. And is there a nomination for board of clerk? I nominate Mrs. Kessler to be board of clerk. There's a second from it. Is there another nomination for board of clerk? All right, if there's none, I'll say aye?
Aye.
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 Anybody pose? All right, congratulations, uh, board of clerk. Um, that was all the positions.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. All right, we're gonna move into the secretary of the state registry of public agencies to the file a statement of facts regarding the newly elected officer of governing board of Salma Unified School District Board with the secretary of the state. May I have a action on this item?
What are we supposed to do?
Um, this is the secretary of the state, they filed.
This just allows us to file with the secretary of state.
Oh, yeah. I'll make a motion for that.
Okay.
All right, is a file for statement by motion uh, from Mr. Fedor, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All favor say aye?
Aye.
Anybody pose? All right, we're moving into item number eleven, approval of authorized signatures. Is there a motion for this item?
I make a motion to approve the ideas.
All right, there is a motion from Mrs. Dorte, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, Mrs. Kessler second, all favor say aye?
Aye.
Anybody pose? All right, uh, moving into item number twelve, mailing permit. Um, is there a motion uh, to accept as presented?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second? All right, uh, Mrs. Dorte a second, all favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody pose? All right, we're gonna move into designate authorized agent. Um, the district superintendent, Mr. Ed Gomes, assistant assistant, um, assistant assistant superintendent, business and sports services, Jessica Valerial, chief human resources officer, Mr. Wayne Dixon, and a chief academic officer, Raquel Hammett, by designated by the Salma Unified School District as the authorized agent for the state district and a federal program. May I have a motion for this item?
I'll make a motion to accept this.
All right, there's a motion, is there a second to it?
I'll second.
All right, all favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody pose? All right, we're moving to the finance. The assistant superintendent, business and sports services, be uh, designated as the authorized agent for the matter dealing with the finance. May I have a motion for this item?
I'll make a motion.
All right, is there a second to it?
I'll second.
All right, Stella has a second, all favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody pose? All right, we're moving into the item number fifteen, revolving cash. The any two of the following person will be authorized for revolving cash and a clearing account, sign signatures. Ed Gomes, Jessica Valerial, Wayne Dixon, Rachel Hammett, and a Brandy Spray. May I have a motion for this item?
I make a motion to accept.
There's a motion to accept, is there a second to it?
I have a second.
All right, there's a second to it, all favor say aye?
Aye.
Anybody pose? All right, moving into the cafeteria fund, that two of the following person will be authorized for the cafeteria fund signatures. Ed Gomes, Jessica Valerial, Wayne Dixon, uh, Raquel Hammett, and a Justin Hoops. Is there act, is there action for this item?
I'll make a motion.
All right, is there a second to it?
I'll second it.
All favor say aye?
Aye.
Anybody pose? All right, we're moving into secretary, Ed Gomes, district superintendent, will be designated secretary to the board of trustee, is there a motion for this item?
I'll make a motion to, for Ed to be our secretary.
Is there a second to it?
Oh, I'll second that.
All favor say aye?
Aye.
Anybody pose? All right, we're moving into California School Board Associations and a county trustee. Um, we need a motion to designated the presentative?
And um, Nick, on this one here, just so you guys recall, they should have, uh, you, you all have a copy of what you guys did last year. Um, these are board positions that are around the county, everything from V R O P to C I F and, and others and some of you guys are already on it, you might want to be on there again, so I just want to make sure.
I can do this one, because it doesn't entail too much.
Okay.
So I just wanted to set that up first, Nick, so you can go continue on.
Got you, all right. Um, so that one is the for California School Board Association. Um, is there a nominee?
I think, do we nominate or do you?
Yeah, yeah, so this one here, you can declare the person, the person can speak out and say, I'd like to do that. And this one here requires about four or five meetings, it's usually on the third Thursday uh, that the county puts out, so um, June, February, September, and December are normally the dates of those, and it's always the third Thursday.
I, I can find that one too.
All right.
If anybody else wants it, I don't care.
This is Mrs. Kessler, uh, is there any um, other persons interested? All right, all favor say aye?
Aye.
Anybody pose? All right, we're gonna move into the valley R O P. Um, I was previous member uh, as a?
Angel.
Yeah, and then alternated was the Joel, I'm sorry, yeah, Joel Fedor. And I'd like to be stay on it, if um, anybody else interested?
I'm, yeah, I'm good with that. I'd, I'd love to be the alternate too, I kinda?
Okay.
Hang out in the back.
All right. Um, if there's no other persons, all favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody pose? All right, moving into legislative network, uh, who was the previous?
Mark, it was Mark.
Mark, yeah, you wanna stay on it?
Yeah.
Did you, wasn't anything or?
There wasn't a whole lot going on with it.
All right, all favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody pose? All right, we're moving into the committee district organization. Uh, who was that before?
That one was um, Joel Anastela.
Oh, that's the?
I don't, I don't mind that.
That's the one where?
That's the one time you vote for the?
One time, you write your name and that's it.
That's right. Some of these are just like a one time.
Feel free, anybody who wants it.
I remember that, but okay.
So you want to be on that one?
That one's fine. Oh, Stella.
No.
I like the way she said that.
And I'll be the alternate, let her be now.
Okay.
Doesn't it? Okay. If Joel doesn't want to do it?
What?
No, I'm, I'm good. No, I'm goo- I'm good.
Okay.
You're good?
Yeah.
You wanna do it?
You're good, like, you wanna do it, or you're good? No, 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 do it, do it.
Yeah, two people, so, uh, who are the?
So we have a Joel and a Mark.
No, Joel doesn't wanna do it.
No, Joel doesn't want it. Stella and Mark.
Anastia and Mark?
Yes. All favors say aye?
Aye.
Anybody pose? All right, we're gonna, uh, moving into the Fresno County Self Insurance Group Agencies Board, self insured schools of California, and organization of a self insured school. Um.
Mark had it before.
Yeah, I'll do it again, if you want me to do it again.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
All favors say aye?
Aye.
Anybody pose? All right, moving into the California Intersolistics Federation, CIF. All right, Mrs. Kessler, interested in there? Is anybody else?
I know better than to even try, so.
All favors say aye?
Aye.
Anybody pose? All right, um, board schedule of meeting. Um, the schedule of meeting of the board of trustee of Salma Unified School District Board of twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, board year.
So this is the schedule of meeting for the board of trustees. Uh, you guys had a copy of it, pretty much, uh, similar, uh, although I did reduce, uh, one, uh, from the previous year, uh, which you'll see in July. Uh, and then there's also, um, less one that we had last year for the fiscal meeting, so I think, uh, in the end, it comes up to nineteen of them versus the twenty-one. Um, but, uh, you have all the dates there.
All right, if there's any question, if there's no question, I need a motion for this item. All right, Mrs. Dorte, have a motion to accept the dates for the next year's meeting schedule. Is there a second to it?
I'll second.
All favors say aye?
Aye.
Anybody pose? All right, we're gonna, I need a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I will make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All favors say aye?
Aye.
Anybody pose? All right, we're gonna move back into.
Just second, they'll have another meeting after this, and then we open up, uh, a new board meeting for this, uh, financing corporation of directors.
All right, um, call to order at five thirty-two P M, and roll call, um.
And Nick, um, there is a speaker here, um, so they have their three minutes, if you wanna, we can call him, 'cause it's the first thing actually is.
Oh, yes, okay, before we even then call.
That's right.
All right.
Okay.
I was gonna do the roll call after, then we will call him.
Fine, you wanna do that, that's fine.
Yeah. We'll do the roll call, uh, Mr. Fedor?
I'm still here.
All right, Mr. Medina?
Still here.
Mrs. Kessler?
Here.
Mrs. Dorte? And I'm here, myself, and, uh, there's a public comments.
Okay, so this, we'll, we'll do this one for the other one, uh, the next meeting coming up.
There's six.
Yeah, the final one, yeah, yeah.
All right, sounds good. All right, we're gonna move, um, into the approval of agenda. May I have a motion to the accept the agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second to it? All right, Stella has a second. All favors say aye?
Aye.
Anybody pose? All right, we're gonna move into resolutions. Resolution FY twenty twenty-five dash one, electing officer. Do we need to read that resolution?
Yeah, I, I can do it if you don't have it there, I can, I can do it here. Let me just go ahead and do it. I got it right here in front of me. I, I can do it if you'd like.
No, I, I'm trying to find it, whereas I have it somewhere. Oh, sorry, right here. Yep, I got both of them. Yep. Sorry about that. All right, we're gonna, resolution, uh, number, uh, FY twenty twenty-five dash zero one, resolved by the director of Salma, uh, school financing corporations that the following persons are elected to the officer set forth. Offer their names below as officer of the corporation to be served until the election and a qualification of their successor, and provide an Article Four, Section four point zero two of the bylaw of a corporation. Name, um, Nick, Narendra Nick Sehoda as a president, vice president Joel Fedor, Ed Gomes superintendent as executive director, Jessica Valerio as assistant superintendent treasurer, and, um, sec- sec- secretary. Seiya as a secretary, and the foregoing resolution was adopted by the board of trustee of the Salma Unified District Board. Fresno Counties at a regular meeting of said board held on a December seventeenth by the following vote. So, uh, we're gonna do roll call on these?
Roll call.
Roll call, all right. Uh, Mr. Fedor?
Yes.
Mrs. Kessler?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Medina?
Yes.
And Mrs. Dorte? And myself, Jess. We're gonna move into resolution number FY twenty twenty-five dash two. Resolution appointing the time and a place of the organization of meeting, Salma School Financing Corporation is all by the board of director, uh, Salma School Financial Financing, uh, Corporation of the second Tuesday in December of each year, following the organizational meeting of a Salma Unified School District Board of Trustee unless the otherwise determined by majority vote of the trustee, which will be held at five forty-five P M at the Salma Unified School District, thirty thirty-six Thompson Avenue, Salma, California. Is her be appointed as the time and a place for the regular meeting of the board pursuant to the sec- Article Two, Section Six of the bylaw of the corporations. I heard be certified that foregoing is a full, true, and a correct copy of a resolution duly passed and adopted by board of directors of the Salma School Financing Corporation, that a meeting therefore duly held on the seventeenth day of December twenty twenty-four by the following board of director thereof. And we're gonna take a, uh, roll call on this. Um, Mr. Fedor?
Yes.
Mrs. Stella?
Yes.
And Mr., um, Medina?
Yes.
And, uh, Mrs. Dorte? And I self Jess. All right, um, other business, uh, that I need a adjourn for this meeting. May I get a motion to adjourn this?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, is there a second? All favors say aye?
Aye.
All right, all right, this meeting is adjourned. We're gonna, moving into our regular board meetings. All right, uh, the call to the order at, uh, five thirty-eight P M, and the roll call. Mr. Fedor?
Still here.
All right, Mrs. Kessler?
Here.
Mr. Medina?
Here.
Mrs. Dorte? And I'm here, myself, and may I have a, uh, motion to approval of agenda?
I'm, go ahead.
All right, uh, open forum for closed session. A notice with the public comments on a closed session agenda items. This opportunity is provided.
Do we approve the agenda?
Sorry?
Did you open up already to?
Open forum for closed session?
Oh, yeah, okay, 'cause you need to, we, this is moving to closed session here, then we're gonna go to closed session first. Did we do a second and a vote for the agenda?
On which one?
On the, on the agenda, approve the agenda.
Stella, Stella made the motion.
Okay, well then I'll second.
Okay, all favors say aye?
Aye.
All right, anybody pose? All right, so we're gonna move into the closed session?
Yes.
Okay, we will now be into the closed session, and we will be back at round six.
Yeah, about six.
You have to do the open forum first for closed session?
No? Okay.
...
Oh, it's just a calendar.
Oh.
That's what it is.
It looks important.
Call to order at six fourteen P M. Good evening and welcome to the December seventeenth, twenty twenty four, uh, board meeting of Summer Uniform School District. This meeting is now in session. And the rule call, Mr. Fedor?
Here.
Mrs. Kessler?
Here.
Mr. Medina?
Here.
And Mrs. Dorte?
Here.
And I'm here myself. Flag salute, please stand. Mrs. Kessler, could you lead us?
I certainly can. My little Jeffy gentlemen walk in. Are they all in? You can come in. Are you ready? Ready, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of our existence in this land and to the republic which stands on nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Everybody can sit. A report of a closed session. When in a closed session, the board take action on the following items. Uh, the board approved a suspended stipulated expulsion F Y twenty five dash zero four by all board members and would anonymously approved it. And also they voted, uh, students suspended stipulated expulsion, uh, twenty five dash zero five. All board members voted anonymously and approved it. Uh, moving into item number twelve, school reports. Do we have a student representative, uh, Salma High School, Elsie? Elsa Salazar or? Would I have a school representative?
Yeah.
Yeah. There she is. I didn't even see it.
Last week was our winter week. We had lunch activities and dress up days that followed. Last Thursday, we held our second core for breakfast of the year, recognizing sixty one students that effectively displayed one or more of our Salma High family values, integrity, work ethic, accountability, and perseverance. Red Cross Club held their silos for their first blood drive this year. It will take place next year, January fifteenth during our school day. Saturday was our annual winter formal. The theme was masquerade, about one hundred and seventy five students attended, and there was a food truck, a dessert table. Our canned food drive ended today. First period classes competed to see who could gather the most. Whoever collected the most amount of cans will be awarded with the hot chocolate and cookie party. This week is finals week. Link we, Link Crew is hosting a cocoa and cramp today after school. Our Link Crew leaders are helping out our freshmen and preparing them before their first finals. They're enjoying free hot chocolate and cookies. On Thursday, we have been fortunate enough to have food trucks after school. There are various food options available after our finals. Friday is the last day of our fall semester, and we also have our start of our winter break. And now for athletic report. As the fall season has ended, Salma High School team season ended at Palmdale in the state regional matchup. The Bears battled at the very end, losing forty one to thirty eight in a very hard fought battle. Thank you for everyone that attended the game and made the three hour drive through the desert. The football team will be selling championship T shirts to help pay for their section championship rings. More info to come. Boys and girls wrestling has competed and will be competing throughout winter break as well as boys and girls basketball and boys and girls soccer. Tri-county Conference play will can, will resume with, will resume when we return winter vacation. Thanks again and go Bears.
From ALMS, we have Lani Press, uh, and Casey Berry.
Good evening. My name is Casey Berry, and this is the ALMS school report. Band, congratulations to our very own Oliver Dillard and Aldo Gutierrez Orozco for being accepted into the intermediate honor band with the Fresno Madera County Music Educators Association. This is a huge accomplishment as competition is fierce. They will perform on Saturday, January eleventh, twenty twenty five at six P M. at the Paul Shaguan Concert Hall at Clovis North High School. You are all invited to attend. Etiquette luncheon. On Friday, November twenty second, the library hosted its annual etiquette luncheon for our special day students. This was a culminating activity for their etiquette and manners unit. Door decorating contest. In advisory class, students were able to decorate their classroom door. The theme was winter wonderland. The winning doors came from Ms. Romek and Mr. Garza's classes. Annual canned food drive. Our annual canned food drive ends this Wednesday. All non-perishable food items that are donated will be passed on to the Salma cares for their annual Christmas food box giveaway. Winter fun week. The theme is it's a Charlie Brown Christmas. Dress up days include an ugly holiday sweater, festive holiday socks, being like Snoopy and wearing black and white, and holiday headgear. There are also daily activities, Christmas Bonanza, Charlie Brown Bingo, catch Snoopy, ornament decorating, and on Friday, our student staff intramural basketball game. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I wanted to just real quick from the board and the district to our student representatives tonight, I wanted to give you guys a little some soul. Come on back.
Thank you. Thank you, students. We're gonna move into the, uh, public input. Members of the public wishing to the address the Board of Education on a matter within the jurisdiction of a board, but not on this agenda. May do so during the public comments period for up to three minutes. Public comments on a specific agenda items are heard under that item. For the public record, please state your name. Do we have any public comment, Mr. Gomes?
No.
All right. We're gonna move into the superintendent.
Okay, so what we're all here for right now, if you see all these gentlemen behind me, uh, we're excited to have Salma High School Boys varsity football team here tonight who are recently crowned division five Valley champions. Well, with the, oh, the entire team is all here behind me. Uh, we're so proud of the team's grit, determination, and wavering, never quit attitude. They went from one nine record last year, one and nine, right, to winning the Valley championship. So to help, help us celebrate this outstanding achievement, I'd like to invite the coaches, um, Nathan Lane up, up here. I guess you guys are already up here, so, uh, say a few words and get us started. I know they have to get on a bus here.
Good evening Superintendent Gomes, Executive Cabinet, Board of Trustees, everyone in the audience, and a group of Valley champions standing here, uh, behind me. Yeah, let's give them a round of applause. Uh, just a little bit of a recap for the season and, and some things that you need to talk about when it comes to football is when they start their season, it is blistering hot. It's a hundred and ten degrees out there, and I know I went out and talked to the coaches and the, and the young men during some summer practices. And then when you finish the season, it is a bitter cold. And then this, this time it was very foggy as well, so we, we added that element as well. And, and, and the game of football, it's a very physical game. So anytime you lose any sport or anything, it hurts emotionally, but it also hurts physically, right? And, and so that's something that, that we keep in mind and we acknowledge. And as we went throughout the year, there were multiple instances where both teams knew exactly what the other team was gonna do, and it was just a matter of whose will was stronger, who'd spent more time in the weight room and who wanted it more. And the vast majority of the time, the Bears are the ones that ended up on their side of, of the field. And something that we had recognized throughout the game is, uh, the beginning of the game, you know, when both teams are fresh, and then as the game went on, and some, we would just keep running the ball and running the ball, and then, and you could see the line moving you back. And it was, it was something just a pleasure to watch as a, as the principal and as a fan. They really played three seasons. We had five preseason games, five playoff, or five league games, and then five playoff games. Uh, the playoffs started here. Uh, we played Mendota. Uh, we were ahead twenty one to seven. They came back and tied it. Fourth quarter, they were driving and we had lost momentum, and the defense did what they've done all year. They stepped up, they were well coached, they were prepared, they got a stop, and the offense marched eighty yards down the field to end with a touchdown with thirteen seconds left. Um, they did not trail. Bear Nation support grew. I remember getting to Delano, the, the stands were packed, right? I, I saw.
Focus throughout this journey. And when your best is needed, when, when your most important performance is needed and your best performance is has to happen, our coaches stayed laser focused and calm through the journey. And, and that's a tribute to their game preparation and the leadership of Coach Mitch Francis. Where are you at, Coach? Right there is Coach Mitch. I also want to introduce. I want to introduce Coach Harshaw, one of our assistants. Coach Harshaw. Coach Wilcox. Coach Medina. Coach Contreras. And Coach Fabella. And who? Oh, I'm sorry. Coach Cole. Can't forget Coach Cole. Wave your hand, Coach Cole. Thank you, guys. Thank you. Coach Cole was one of our key components as well. Um, and to all of our parents that are here tonight and traveled, it was amazing, amazing to see how we out, uh, we out attended our, our opponent at their house. And you guys all saw that, that we're there. You guys all saw that. So that's critically important when we're the twelfth man on a playoff game invading moral bay. It was just incredible to see that. So again, we've got a place to go, uh, we're gonna get fed, and, uh, nobody deserves it more than these forty seven kids and of course, the, uh, seven coaches that are gonna get to, get something to, uh, to put in their stomach right now. So anyway, thank you guys for having us. Um, it takes a lot of people to do this, and, uh, nobody deserves the recognition more than, than this group here tonight.
Good job.
Our team captains, can our team captains step up? Our team captains, can you step up? Jacob Vega, Caden, and Brayden. These four were voted by the team as our team captains, and those of you that follow the team, Caden Berry, Brayden Francis, Jacob Hernandez, and Brother Vega made up our, uh, made up our team captains for, for the two thousand twenty four squad. So just a little shout out to them.
I want to thank you guys for everything you guys do. I want to thank the coaches, the community. You guys are amazing. I know you guys have a bus waiting for you, and we have some sweets here on the way too, so you probably get your dessert before dinner, but it's okay. Uh, any, any last words here before we get them out?
I could go on forever. You guys are awesome, man. Studs, every one of you. Uh, awesome. Everything I saw was amazing. Go get your steaks.
Totally enjoyed the games. They were, we were, we were biting our nails at those games because, but, um, on that last one in, uh, Palmdale, um, I thought, gee whiz, do we have a Patrick Mahomes here with a couple of stackings left, make that touchdown? But you made us proud. You made us very proud.
All right. You guys are good. Get on that bus, go have a great steak dinner. You guys deserve it.
Just take those with you. Take them with you, Randy.
Yeah, there you go.
Brother Vega.
Wilson next, right now. And then we're gonna pause for pictures. All right, I'll keep going here.
Good job, guys.
And once we are celebrated.
You going to, Mr. Lane?
Once we start the Wilson.
Are you going to?
Are you? All right.
Enjoy.
All right. Okay, so next up here is our student showcase. Our student showcase tonight is Wilson Elementary. They will be featuring their Wilson Elementary leadership students and a special Wilson broadcast that they produced. I invite Principal Veronica Aguayo and the Wilson Leadership Students up to the front.
Good evening, Board President Sahoda, fellow Board members, Cabinet and Superintendent Gomes. My name is Veronica Aguayo, the principal at Wilson Elementary. I'm excited to share the great work of our fourth and sixth grade leadership team as part of the student showcase. Joining me tonight are leadership teachers Danielle Severa, Dany Rodriguez, and students Avery Romero, Adriana Quiros, Alina Graywall, and Liliana Bobadara.
Good evening, Board members and Superintendent Gomes. I am Avery Romero, the student body president from Wilson Leadership, and I'm here with Adriana Quiros, the student body vice president. We would like to share some information about our Wilson monthly broadcast.
The Wilson Leadership Team determines topics of our broadcast by talking with their leadership coordinators during our weekly leadership meetings.
The Wilson Broadcast is important to our students because it can help our students by recognizing their accomplishments along with celebrating their achievements. The broadcast is also important because it keeps the students and staff connected.
What we have learned from making the broadcast is to have fun, make memories, and most importantly, to give the Wilson students a glance of what has happened during the months of the school year.
Last year for Wilson Leadership, we got the chance to visit the behind the scenes of ABC 30. We got to see how they run the news live, and we tried to reflect off of their ways of filming.
Here's a clip of the November edition of the Wilson Broadcast.
Hello, Wilson Wildcats. I'm your leadership anchor and President Avery Romero.
I'm your vice president, Adriana Quiros. Welcome to our November edition, November edition of the Wildcat Recap. November was a busy month, and we're excited to show you all the fun events.
We kicked off the month with our leadership elections. We had a school-wide vote between fourth through sixth grade through Google Forms. The winner for vice president was Adriana from fifth grade.
The winner for president in sixth grade was Avery. Here are some pictures of that fun event.
Wow, great campaign posters.
Next, we celebrated and thanked our veterans on Friday, November 8th, with a lovely breakfast and a ceremony.
We had a great turnout and even had Selma High junior ROTC to present the flag. It is always a wonderful Wilson tradition to thank and honor our veterans for their service and sacrifice.
Let's take a look at a few pictures of this event.
We were also able to celebrate our fellow students that had excellent attendance and our Students of the Month. This month, teachers picked a student that stood out for having integrity.
Let's take a look at the students who are honored. Good job showing your little. We got the trophy gold and knowing what life was like during the gold rush.
What a fun trip. I remember when I went in fourth grade, my favorite part was trying the sourdough bread.
November was a great month. I look forward to seeing all the fun events that will happen in December. See you next month, Wildcats.
Thank you so much for your time tonight. Thank you for highlighting Wilson in the student spotlight.
Thank you to our leadership coordinators, Ms. Alvera and Ms. Rodriguez, and most importantly, our school principal, Ms. Aguayo.
Okay, thank you, Wilson. Way to go.
Yes, that was awesome. Thank you.
So we're going to take a little break here, and there's some goodies for the Wilson students who are here today. So let's take a quick little five minute, come back.
All right. We'll be back in five minutes.
Good. Good.
It wasn't a heart attack, so something triggered, did it go off? Oh, or did I do dehydration? Everything's a good thing. So far, they just wanted me to keep an eye on stuff.
I didn't know you were here.
It was, I had 170 heart rate. Couldn't breathe. They had me all night. We were, we were, went in just to make sure it wasn't a heart attack. It wasn't.
Medication, maybe?
No. I have a fibrillation. You think I have a fibrillated? So where most people with their heart, you have one. A small percentage of people have multiple spots. Under the right conditions, will conflict, making the heart go crazy. When I had my wife, my wife told me.
Does it, is it always warm in here? And where, when we get here on a regular meeting at five, where is the dinner provided? Just right here in the that cafeteria? Are they, did you, are they from a restaurant or did your wife?
My wife brought it from a restaurant.
Oh, is it from that restaurant that we, that we went to for your?
Yeah, that's it. So good.
They are very good. So at that, then I had buttered chicken for the first time in my.
Really?
It's good.
Yeah, they they really make good food.
Thank you. Don't do it, Roxanne. Don't do it. Look at the person who's telling you what the, what's the. Look at the person who's telling you not to. There's a lot of goodies here.
So I'll continue on as we're starting here back. There's two more items on my part here.
All right, we are back in the session.
I still have two more.
Oh, it's happening.
Okay. Two more fun stuff here. One is ABC 30 Featured Math and Special Education Curriculum. Two weeks ago, ABC 30 visited Selma Unified to highlight our new math and special education curriculum. The story aired this evening during their 4:30 PM broadcast today. So let's take a look at the broadcast that was out today.
The project was made possible by funding from the Institute of Museum and Library Services administered by the DC Public Library. For those interested, there are three-hour sessions available on Tuesdays through Friday. You can fill out a form online, or you can call the Tillery County Library Branch in Visalia.
That's a great idea. The Selma Unified School District rolled out brand-new curriculum this year. It has created changes in elementary math and special education. Action News anchor Jessica Harrington spoke with teachers about why they think it will have a lasting impact on students.
I know we have to multiply the numerator and what else? The denominators. That gave us a lot of grief, right?
Roosevelt Elementary School teacher Galen Gudjel walked through the process of multiplying fractions with her fifth-grade class.
Love it. So you kind of just explain the whole process to us, yeah?
This year, new curriculum from illustrative mathematics was rolled out for kindergarten to fifth-grade students. That matches the curriculum already being used in sixth, seventh, and eighth grades. But change can be scary as a student.
At first, they were like, they were not happy.
Instead of just solving the equation, students have to understand the problem, solve it, and then explain how and why they solved it in that way. They also have to use academic vocabulary. Gudjel says those added steps are helping students in the long run.
I'm seeing much more retention of the concept since skills than we have in the past.
Gudjel says students are also now more aligned with the state standards they have to meet. Down the street at Abraham Lincoln Middle School, the special day class also has new curriculum. They're using the Teach Town program, which the district says emphasizes early literacy and numeracy skills. Teacher Bailey Osmer says best of all, it allows her seventh and eighth-grade students to better connect with their peers.
Previously, we had stuff that it looked more childish, and they're in seventh and eighth grade, so what their peers are doing is like chapter books, and what this curriculum tries to do is to have them read those same things, but modified to their level.
The curriculum helps determine each student's learning level. Teachers have instructions on how to present the material at each level, plus physical materials that are prepared for them, reducing your prep work.
Instead of stressing out about, you know, how are we going to do this, or how are we going to manage this, it's letting us actually have the time to teach it to them.
Osmer says she believes the change will also help students reach big goals the state has set for them.
They want the students to be geared more towards reaching their diplomas and shooting higher for academics, and this will really help push that and help students reach that.
The district says the new curriculum helps move students toward academic success. It says it also hopes this helps students have the tools they need to reach their educational goals. In Selma, Jessica Harrington, ABC 30 Action News.
So I want to thank the board for adopting and voting for those curriculums last year, and they're in place this year. Also, it doesn't stop there. News stations must like us because they're filming additional stories showcasing our state results at ALMS. They're also doing a segment on our Selma Public Education Foundation and our upcoming winter camp. So they're going to be doing three more stories that are going to hit the news. So that's good for Selma and good for us, and great things happening. So it's fantastic.
Thank you.
And the next one here is the adoption of proposed budget policy for administrative regulation. This item is presented for action regarding board policy for the employment of relatives. I'll hand it over to Wayne, actually, to speak of this a little bit.
Good evening, Board. Thank you, Mr. Gomes. So we had a a policy that had been previously adopted, and it was about five years out of date. So this was an update that looked at, one, defining relationships between administrators, board members, and potential employees, looking at employment of, again, bringing in family members, that we were looking at, again, wanting to hire the best candidates. So with this policy, it's outlined how we would go through our hiring of employees, especially looking at if there was a relationship. It also deals with the looking at placing of employees in school sites with relatives so that you don't have any direct supervision of an employee by someone who's related to them, but also where if there's a disruption of having family members at the same site, that district-level administration can, in the best interest of the district, make a decision not to do that. So it just really is outlining our actions. So you got a board policy, which is really the, you know, what is the rule? And then the administrative reg, how we then put that in place. So we did not have an administrative reg previously, so we are putting one in place, or asking for the board to approve, so we have one in place.
Is there any questions from the board?
So you're not saying that no relative can be, can be hired?
So we're not saying that. It's just that it's really looking at, so if we were hiring someone related to me, that we'd need to make that aware of, you know, if a board member was having a family member, that they would make that aware during that meeting, whereas an administrator, I would need to make that aware to the board. So it's not saying that we wouldn't hire those, it's just that we're making it aware. But also, if I was a site principal, I couldn't hire a family member to work at my site because I would be supervising them. So it really is outlining that, and the big part was defining those relationships, because that was not really defined previous.
Getting some guidelines.
Yes.
On, on relationships, I guess you might say.
That's correct.
So this is just bringing the board policy and the administrative regulation in alignment?
That's correct. So as I previously stated, we did not have administrative regulations, so we put one in place.
But we did have the board policy.
We did have a board policy, and so we actually defined that a little bit more, added more language to that. And if I just take a quick bird walk, Mr. Gomes is having us take a look at all of our board policies to bring those back up to date.
There'll be more coming to you guys. I use a lot of the CSBA updated.
For changes in law.
For changes, so you'll see that. And so you'll, we contract with CSBA, and they provide us their, here's what's the update, here's what's been used in California. So you're going to see more of this, it's just the beginning.
We're just lining up with them. All right. Is there any question? If not, may I have a motion for this item?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second to?
I'll second.
All right, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody pose? All right. We are moving into services. The CASP Official Data Review.
Yes, thank you. I would like to call Mrs. Sonia Oliva, our data analyst, teacher on special assignment to the podium. As she makes her way up, I wanted to remind you that we have had various data presentations this school year, but now we have the official results from the state, and that is what we will be sharing with you. Thank you, Sonia.
Good evening.
So these will be our official CASP results, which was released on the California Dashboard on November 21st. The CASP Dashboard is the system, sorry, the California Dashboard is the system that holds us accountable for the growth of all student groups. As you may remember, in October, PARSEC presented preliminary CASP data that focused on the percentage of students that reached proficiency or standard met. Tonight, we will look at how many points our students have grown as they continue to get closer to meeting standard. Focusing on the growth of each student is what the state holds us accountable for. As you can see on the left, we're happy to share our official growth in English Language Arts from 2023 to 2024 was positive five points as measured by the distance from standard met, which means we met our goal of improving by five points on our strategic plan. In mathematics, we exceeded our goal of five points by growing seven and a half points. Together, this is the greatest total growth our students have made in six years. In addition, when you look on the right side and compare our growth to the average growth of all students across California, we greatly surpassed the state average in both English Language Arts and Mathematics. All right. So first, we will look at the English Language Arts portion of the CASP assessment. Again, as we look at CASP results, the data points you are looking at represent how many points students grew from the 2023 assessment to 2024 as measured by the distance from standard met. At the top, again, you can see the district grew overall an average of five points in English Language Arts. Under the district average, we drill down, and we can see the overall growth of students by school. Also, you'll notice there's an asterisk by Heartland. Keep in mind that only 11th graders take the English Language Arts and Math assessments. So when we are looking at scores for Heartland, we are really only looking at 11th graders. For example, at Heartland in 2023, less than 11 students were tested. And when there's such a few number, the California Dashboard doesn't provide data due to confidentiality for those students. For 2024, we had more 11th graders test. Therefore, data was provided on the dashboard for Heartland, but it was fewer than 15 students. In addition, students that attend Heartland typically are building up their credits, and their pathway to graduation looks different than a comprehensive high school. And finally, students who choose this alternative option sometimes transition back to the comprehensive high school once they have caught up with their credits. So that is why you might see a fluctuation in results from year to year. The previous slide showed the overall growth in ELA, English Language Arts, while this chart drills down to student groups. The left side shows the growth of our English learners, and the growth of our students with disabilities are on the right. We'd like to highlight the overall four-point growth of our English learners and the 4.9 growth of our students with disabilities for English Language Arts. Moving on to the math portion of CASP. Again, as we look at CASP results, the data points you are looking at represent how many points students grew from 2023 to 2024 as measured by distance from standard met. And at the top, again, you can see the district grew an average of seven and a half points from 23 to 24 in mathematics. Underneath the district average, we drill down to see the overall growth of students by school. The previous slide show the overall growth in mathematics while this chart drills down to student groups. The left side shows the growth of our English learners in mathematics, and the growth of our students with disabilities are on the right. Again, we'd like to highlight the positive growth of both student groups. 3.6 points for our English learners and 4.1 points for our students with disabilities. We'd also like to share with you our official graduation rates broken down by school. We can see the changes in the graduation rate over the last three years, going back to 2022. The last column compares the growth or decline in the graduation rate from 2023 to 2024. Next, we will present our state test performance over time. Since we are held accountable for the growth of each student as measured by distance from standard met, the next two slides will show the change in distance from standard met going back to 2017. These slides may look familiar to you since PARSEC presented our preliminary data in October, and now we can see the official results. As you look at the last two bars on the bar graph for 2023 and 2024, you can see the five-point growth for English Language Arts that was referenced in previous slides. And for mathematics, when looking at the last two bars on the bar graph, we can see the seven-and-a-half-point growth our district made from 2023 to 2024. Both graphs show a positive upward trend toward getting closer to standard met, which is represented by the black line at the top of the graph. And a highlight for math is that our distance from standard met is better than it was pre-COVID. Finally, we'd like to compare our data with similar districts across the state of California based on similar demographics. When PARSEC presented these next slides, they used the preliminary data that was aligned to percent proficiency. The state holds us accountable for growth, so we wanted to present these slides using distance from standard met. The criteria for selecting similar districts is 80% or higher threshold for low income and 25% or more English learners. And for reference, Selma is at 92% low income and 29% for English learners. Statewide, here you'll see on the left-hand side is English Language Arts, and on the right is Mathematics. So as you can see, with other districts with similar demographics, there are 131 other school districts in California that have demographics like Selma Unified. In English Language Arts, if you look at the left inside that blue box, we ranked 26th out of 131 school districts, which is up from 34th in 2023. And on the right for Mathematics, we ranked 35th out of 131 districts, which is up from 47th in 2023. And on this slide, this is ranking only districts with similar demographics in Fresno County. So in Fresno County, there are 16 school districts with a similar demographic profile as Selma. On the left, you can see that in English Language Arts, Selma USD ranked 6th out of 16 districts, which is up from 7th in 2023. And on the right side for Mathematics, Selma ranked 6th, up from 8th out of 16 similar school districts.
Sorry, I drank water at the wrong time. On this slide here, excuse me, you will see a few items listed as our next steps at the district and site level. So first, we want to make sure that along the way, we stop and we celebrate the growth we have shown. This includes showcasing our growth in our district newspaper, celebrating with teacher teams, promoting great practices across our system, and celebrating students by holding special events like a scholar party, which you will hear more about shortly. This year, our administrative team has also identified five indicators for highly effective instruction. The image that you see on the left side are the posters that were made and displayed at sites to ensure focus of the five indicators. When we meet as an administrative team, our professional learning revolves around these five elements. When administrators conduct classroom visits, these are the indicators that we are looking for. So as you look down the list, the first one is creating conditions for learning. That really is all around the classroom environment, following structures through PBIS, creating an environment where our students feel physically safe and that we have components of our social-emotional learning and development for our students, because we know that that's where it starts, right? When kids feel safe in the classroom and with their teachers and at the school sites, they're more apt to learn. The second indicator that you see there is grade level content. That's ensuring that all of the curriculum that we use is aligned and adopted and that we really are providing the scaffolding for our students so they're able to gain access to the grade level content. The third one is student ownership. This one is really about having the students doing that cognitive lift and just really trying to build thinking classrooms where the students are collaborating and they're practicing their critical thinking skills, and there's lots of conversation between the students. The next one is a differentiation, and this includes adding layers like interventions, whether it be in the classroom or outside, enrichment opportunities for our students that need that additional component, and also the reteaching that happens within the classroom. And then finally, it's aligned assessments. And I do have a site presentation where the principal will be speaking a little bit more about the work that they're doing to ensure that there's an alignment to the assessments that we have. But we've also been doing a lot of work at the district level. As you know, we've created some interim assessments that are more aligned to the claims and targets in the CASP blueprint. Also, for Heartland, we will continue to work to align courses to our students' needs, ensuring that we offer opportunities for students that are choosing the alternative option for receiving their diploma. We will continue to offer enhanced support with our mental health team and counselors. At this time, I would like to invite Wilson Elementary Principal Veronica Guayo to the podium. We want to make sure that anytime that we have a data presentation, we're connecting it to the work that we're doing at the school sites. She will be speaking about how Wilson analyzes their results, how they address their challenges, along with setting those growth targets for their students and staff.
Good evening again, Board Member Sehoto, Fall of Board Members, Cabinet and Superintendent Gomes. As shared in the previous slide, Wilson shows significant growth in ELA, math, and English learners' progression towards proficiency. I am incredibly proud of our staff and students, and I am here tonight to share some of our action steps to improve student achievement. Through the cycle of continuous improvement, we are constantly reflecting on data and using that as our driver. An example of this was on November 5th. During our Certified Professional Learning Day, during this time, teachers identified claims and targets with unfinished learning based on interim one data. Teachers then created common formative assessments aligned to standards, and within their professional learning communities, they mapped out instruction leading up to the assessment. This cycle of continuous improvement ensures that we are not only focusing on what students know, but also addresses what happens when they do not know it. Most recently, all grade-level teams, including our SDC programs, were given a sub-release day for trimester two. During this planning day, teachers worked collaboratively on planning instruction using our Core Benchmark Advance for ELA and illustrative math curriculum. I would also like to share, to support students in gaining access to grade-level text, we have established a SMART goal to monitor and measure the implementation of foundational reading skills in Kinder through third grade. Through the collaboration of our reading intervention team, teachers, and literacy coaches, our site has been focusing on the explicit instruction of phonemic awareness, phonics, and decoding. These foundational skills are critical for reading and students' access to complex texts. Another action that I'm really excited to share is just our school-wide focus on student growth. This is known as the Scholar Party. This celebration focuses on students' academic growth from interim one assessment to interim two assessment that they will take in the spring. Their criteria for the Scholar Party includes student growth on ELA or math, interim test, and scholarly habits, such as attending school, being prepared, and showing your work. Last year, the students participated in a fun afternoon of carnival games, bounce houses, and obstacle courses. The Scholar Party reinforces the growth mindset and student goal-setting. I look forward to our next Scholar Party in the spring where we will be celebrating big and small academic growth. As previously mentioned, I take great pride in our Wilson community and look forward to sharing the results of our actions. Thank you for your support and time this evening.
We welcome any questions that anybody may have at this time.
This is great. This is awesome. This is what the reports I was looking for a while when I got on the board four years ago. So we're doing awesome. You know, our five points are up on the ELA, and well, as the maths are up. And also, the graduation rates are back to getting to the normal, which is good to see that. And I see the few schools, Jackson and Roosevelt are still, they are doing kind of a little different. Either we need to find out, to wait to collaborate, you know, with the, you guys, the Wilsons doing it. Awesome, Laura, things that you mentioned that maybe we need to look into that, see how we can help the other schools to bring it up.
So the great thing about the November date is that we were able to have all school sites do exactly what Principal Agayo referenced. And so every school had their own entire day to work with their teams to go through the data analysis, and not only at the site level, but then also teachers were able to review the data at their classroom level, and then not only review it, but also have action items, action steps to follow, focus a list of students that need maybe additional support in this specific claim or target, and then plan that instruction to then be able to be ready for the second interim. Now, the second interim will also be, because we use CASP blueprints to tell us like specific claims and targets, and we build the test around that, the second interim will be able to use it to compare that growth. So we're following what the state is doing with the growth model with our intrums as well.
Great.
And I have something to add. Like, one of the things that I do when I look at data, and I don't want to extinguish the positives, but I'm a believer that even if your data goes up and you don't know how it went up, that's lucky. If your data goes down and you know why it goes down, I like that almost better than it just going up because, well, we're not sure how we can continue that. So I'm a believer of teachers and site leaders working together to discover whether it goes down or up, why. To me, the why is the source for learning and making change, or else you're lucky. So when I see data, I always look, whether it's red or green, I go, do you know why? And if a person who goes down knows why, I'm a happy camper, and that's great, because I know that's the beginning of change. So when I see our data, even though I see red and green, and I cheer that we went up, my question is, why did we go up and why did we go down? If you can answer that, both are a positive thing. So but I thank the board there, and I do thank everyone who put that work effort in to get the results that we got, which is fantastic.
Yeah, that's great. The sixth rank in Fresno Counties, that's awesome. Maybe hopefully next year, we are in the top one.
Well, yeah, I was going to say, look out, Kings Canyon, we're coming for you. John. I mean, are we where we want to be? No. But are we getting there? Yes, we're making progress. And that's a testament to all the hard work you guys are all doing. Because I'm not doing it. We're not doing it, right? You guys are doing it.
Teachers and principals and everyone.
A huge shout-out to the teachers and the site administrators and everybody, because it takes a lot of hard work, and it's tough work, you know, the work that we do. But we do it together, and so we appreciate everybody that's on the team.
Yeah. All right. You guys made us our end of the year. Good. You know, this is awesome.
Thank you, ladies.
Any questions from the board?
We're coming for Kings Canyon.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna move into the Expanded Learning Program. Winter Session 2024. Speaker Teresa.
Yes, I would like to call Mrs. Teresa De Pedro up. She is our Expanded Learning Opportunities Program Coordinator. She will be presenting our plans for winter session.
Good evening, President Sahoda, fellow Board Members, Superintendent Gomes, Executive Cabinet, and guests. Tonight, I'm going to provide a brief overview of our Expanded Learning Program's winter session. Our winter session will be comprised of eight days, beginning on Monday, December 30th, and running through January 10th. We will have holidays on December 31st and January 1st. Our program will be open from 7:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. And then we'll have two locations for our camps. One will be at the elementary site at Roosevelt. And the secondary for 7th through 12th grade will be off-location or off-campus over at Chitancy Park in Fresno. Our elementary schedule, our instructional minutes will begin at 8 o'clock in the morning and roughly run through 1:15. We'll have four hours of academic instruction, two hours dedicated to literacy, and two hours dedicated to math. We will continue with the AB schedule. And what this means is, half of our students, if we take one class, half of the students will stay with the teacher and get the academic portion. The other half of the students will join our vendors and do the enrichment classes. And then after lunchtime, they'll switch. And then in the afternoon, if students decide to stay throughout the afternoon, excuse me, throughout the afternoon, we'll have enrichment from 1:30 until 4:00 p.m. And at this time, we have about 342 students who are enrolled in our winter camp, which is the highest number we've had so far. In our secondary schedule, again, they will be taking, we will be taking them to Chitancy Park, and it's called Making a Banda Camp. The students will be provided with four 45-minute rotations of enrichment classes. They'll have an hour of physical education. And then students from Heartland will be able to participate in two hours of credit recovery. And then some of high school students will be able to participate in the online portion of driver's ed. And the projected enrollment for our high school, excuse me, for our middle through high school students, right now, we're at 101. And again, historically, this is the highest that we've had so far in our winter camp. And these are the participating vendors who will be providing enrichment classes throughout the eight days. And again, these are the vendors that our board approved back in November. And once winter camp is over, I look forward to providing you with a presentation and an update of what happened in winter camp. So we'll see you at the beginning of next year.
Awesome. That's great. We got so many students participating. That's awesome. That's great. Is there any question from the board? Thank you.
I would like to say, during these three weeks when everyone's cuddling up in their warm beds and our parents are going, yes, my child is leaving for the day, I can relax a little more. One less mouth to feed our children who are going to this. And I'll tell you, if you ever have a chance to go to these, go and see, they're waking up at 6:30 in the morning on cold days and marching themselves out to the schools to learn and work for free, right? They're not getting paid. So it's one, out of all of the things that you do at a school site, it's the one, when you watch those little kiddos on a cold morning, walking their way to school, I just tip my hat off to them. And it's a big tribute to our kids. Because when every kid is talking about, what are you gonna do for these three weeks? And they're sharing their stories, we're gonna go snow, we're gonna do this. They're going, I'm gonna come back to school on Monday. So it's a big one, and I really thank the students. This is one I really want to make a big deal of because it's big and it's hard to make it here. It really is.
Absolutely. Yeah, Mr. Gomes, times have been changed since you and me went to school. Now the kids play on the game, so it's better to be educated than to have them out there.
And we take advantage of these times to ensure that we provide enrichment opportunities for our students. So we get them away from the screen and doing something that they otherwise wouldn't be able to do.
No, it would be more successful at the school.
And then I would like to invite the board also. We will have culminating activities, so the last day is January 10th. The elementary school will have culminating activities at Roosevelt. And if you can make your way to Chitancy Park, they're gonna do a fantastic job presenting at Grizzly Stadium. So you are all invited to attend.
Could you send an email to that effect?
I can, yes.
Yeah, we'll make sure you guys get it with times and everything. Yep.
We'll try.
Thank you.
All right, moving into approval of MOU with the Juicy Merced Automatic Admissions Program. Funding sources are, I guess, not equitable.
Any.
So it's all taken care of, right?
Yes, the best kind. This request is similar to the partnership we currently have with Fresno State's Bulldog Bound Program. However, this is with UC Merced. And so it provides guaranteed admissions to our participating high school students, to UC Merced. The program provides students and their families with the resources, services, tools needed, and tools needed to meet the requirements at no charge to our district.
Awesome. This is great. I mean, Juicy Merced, now we got the Juicy Merced, we got Fresno State. I mean, our school's doing good.
It's an additional opportunity for our students that we wouldn't otherwise be able to provide.
No, thank you for that. Is there any questions from the board?
No, that's awesome.
All right, if not, may I have a motion for this item?
I'll make the motion.
All right, there's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All favors say aye?
Aye.
Anybody pose? All right, moving into the facilities. PVK, Universal Pre-K Projects Amendments. Physical impact is 134,696, reduction of 116,000. Funding sources, California preschool, transitional kindergarten, and full-day kindergarten facility.
Yes, thank you. So this is the architect fees for the project of the UTK out at Andrew Jackson Elementary. This project first started back a couple, last year. And at that point, the scope was to have eight classrooms, four kindergarten and four TK. And we were gonna have to match the funding that we received. And so that was looking at that time about $2.8 million. And so when we looked at what was, what we applied for, I think what the goal was to just apply for the most that we can get and see what sticks kind of a thing. And we got approved for the entire thing. But then that made us look to see enrollment projections, the needs of the district, and see if we can fill those classrooms, right? Once we looked at that and looked at the demographic study from Schoolworks, we found that the projections were lower and could it sustain that eight number, or eight classrooms? So we thought hard about it, we discussed it, and decided to reduce the scope to two classrooms, which is more appropriate for our enrollment counts and projections. And so by doing that, the architect fees reduced dramatically. And then obviously, our scope of work reduced as well. And so now our match is looking at $571,000, which is a lot more manageable than, I think it was 2.8 million. So this fits more what the needs are at Jackson and also what the district's budget can afford.
Is there any questions from the board?
Yeah, so this is not for the project itself. This is just for the plans and the scope.
Yes, this is just for the architectural fees, to reduce the scope to what we now, to right-size it. In, as part of the packet and the attachments, it does go over the new scope of the project and the construction costs and all of the fees that are associated with that. We will take this to bid and after it gets board-approved tonight, and then we'll follow the steps to get the construction completed. We have until September of 26th to get the project completed, so we're on a tight timeline.
Whoa, I guess, yeah.
And we already received $1.2 million for this project.
Great. Any other questions from the board? If not, may I have a motion for this item?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All favors say aye?
Aye.
Anybody pose? All motion carries. Moving into the Human Resources. Resolution FY 25-27, classified, apply the summer assistance program for the 25-26 school year.
Yes, with this resolution, this is an annual action that the district is requesting from the board. In the past, we've approved this, and this is to assist our classified staff. So the state of California is once again providing an opportunity for part-time classified employees to participate in a savings program. They can deposit part of their earnings into an account that's held by the county office. And then during the summer of 2026, the state will do a matching portion to that. And then that is then paid out to the employees. And again, during the summer, that's their time off, so it helps the employees. This program is again fully funded by the state. This request, and with the attached board resolution for the 25-26 school year, is for the district to participate in the Classified School Employee Summer Assistance Program. The cost to the district is minimal, with an estimated time of, staff time of approximately 10 to 15 hours to administrate this. So that's sending out information to our staff, for our payroll staff. So it's very minor in the amount of time it takes. And again, working with our staff to get the information out to them. There is no additional physical impact to the district. The amount of work required is minimal compared to the potential benefit to our part-time classified staff members. So our request is for the board to approve the resolution.
That's a good project.
So if I understand this right, the classified will have the option to put, under certain parameters, put up to about 10% of their earnings into this thing. And then the state, not the district, but the state will actually match it.
That's correct. So the first couple of years, it was very high, it was 90-plus cents to the dollar. So it was almost one-to-one. This last year is like 68 cents. So again, with state and it's, you know, the budget-wise. But it is, it does help our classified, again, their part-time staff, they're off during the summer, so it helps them.
That's good.
And this is the one we do every year, right?
We have done this annually, yes.
How, is it becoming more popular or?
We don't have a lot of staff. I'm sorry, I don't know the exact numbers. But it, for those staff, you know, looking back over the last couple of years, it's the same staff members keep asking, is this coming back? Is this coming back?
Might need to advertise a little bit on it. Because it is a good program.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to accept this.
I'll second.
All favors say aye?
Aye.
Anybody pose? All right, we're moving into the, approve the job description.
So this is the job description for the Fiscal Services Specialist. We had previously brought this job description on October 8th, and the Board of Trustees had approved it at that time. Since the approval through our meetings with CSEA and the district, looking at that job description, there was an agreement between CSEA and the district to modify the job description a little bit. We took some of the items that were there as essential duties and put them into, from that primary responsibility into other duties. And the intent originally was not that that was the primary responsibility. It was that this person would be assisting. So we were just defining the tasks of this position even more. So in, attached to the board agenda is that job description showing the crossouts and those same job descriptions being put down into the other duties.
So this is a classified position?
This is a classified position.
All right, is there any questions from the board? All right.
I'll make a motion to accept.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All favors say aye?
Aye.
All right, anybody pose? All right, we're moving into the Business Services. 24, 2024-24, First Interim Financial Reports and Certification.
Jessica?
Sorry, I'm waiting for the power.
Oh.
Took a little nap. Good evening. IT, please. All right, we're good. All right, good evening. Yes, tonight, I'm presenting tonight the First Interim Financial Report. So on our agenda, we're gonna look at our budget reporting timeline. We're gonna reflect on 23-24 reporting summary. Look at the 24-25 First Interim, which includes the revenues, expenditures, multi-year projection, and some budget adjustments that have occurred. So this is the 24-25 reporting timeline, just to give you an idea of some of the milestones that we have to hit during the fiscal year. So we adopt the budget for the 24-25 budget in June. And the fiscal year actually starts July 1 for 24-25. Shortly after, in September, we close out the prior year books. The 23-24 unaudited actuels is presented. And then in December, we come to you with the First Interim Budget Report for the current year. And then in January, we present the audited, the 23-24 audit. And that's when the auditors come and audit our budgets. And then starting in February, we start planning for the following fiscal year. The 25-26 budget development starts. And then in March, we bring the 24-25 Second Interim Report. And so you can see from this fiscal, from one fiscal year, we're in three years at any given time. As we're working in the current fiscal year, we're closing out prior year, and we're already looking forward to the following year. And this just is a cyclical thing that happens every year. Once we do Second Interim, it starts all over. We'll bring to you the next budget in June and so on. And so it's just a reoccurring vicious cycle, if you will. Okay, so this is how it looks in numbers. So this is again for last year. I just want to reflect on how we looked for last year. So in June, we adopted the budget. At that point, we had revenues of $116 million and expenditures of $119 million, with a deficit of $3.6 million and reserves at 6.08%. One thing that I don't have on this summary is the closing of the books from the prior year, because that's what happens between adopted and first interim. So you see how the beginning balance went from 16.5 million to 33 million? Well, that's because we closed out the books from the prior year and more funding fell to our reserves, our beginning balance. And so that's why there's a jump there. And almost the mirror there, it causes the net to be a deficit of $12 million. And, but we still show reserves of 6.7. And then we bring to you the Second Interim. And that's where we fine-tune the revenues and expenditures. And that's when we presented a $17.6 million deficit, but showing a 5.10% reserve. But then we finally close the books. And what I like to point out is, that's really the only time we actually know how our budget is. So adopted, First Interim, and Second, those are projections. Those are moments in time that we project based off the information we have at that time. The unaudited actuels is the only time we actually know how much revenues we received and what we actually spent. And so a lot of the, and the other thing, the adopted First and Second Interim, not only are they projections, but we assume we're gonna spend every dollar we budget for. And so what the reality is, is not all of it is spent. And some of that has to do with some of our projects. So things are happening throughout the school year. Some of the projects that we had were the bus drop-off, HVAC projects that did, that were major multimillion-dollar projects that didn't complete by June thirtieth. And so all of the funding that we had budgeted for those types of things go into our reserves, but we know that we're going to have to pay for them in the following year, so we have to budget them again. So that's just a reflection of our twenty-three, twenty-four budgeting, budgeting cycle, just to, just to show you the, the comparisons of each report we bring to you, and then how it looks when we actually close the books. So for the first interim, this report covers July first through October thirty-first. And what we include there is our twenty-four, twenty-five governor's enacted budget, with COLAs for twenty-four, twenty-five of one point zero seven, and twenty-five, twenty-six, two point nine three percent COLA, and for twenty-six, twenty-seven, three point zero eight percent COLA. We're actually getting some initial reports that for next year, our COLA looks like it could be one point four, around one point four percent. So that would be a significant decrease for our funding for next year. However, we didn't include that into our projections, because right now, it's just really early to tell, and we like, and we have to use the information that we know of at this moment in time. But that's something to kind of think about, and things that we will have to, like I said, as they change, will reflect the projections that we present to you. We also include our P-two ADA in this first interim, and then we, it also includes a lot of budget adjustments that were made since July first through October thirty-first, because as we saw on the timeline, we are budgeting, are projecting and building the next year's budget really early in the year, and as the year goes on, is when we start to make adjustments as to what's actually happening and where the, the funding is needed. So there's a lot of budget adjustments that are made in the first interim. So the purpose of the first interim report is to certify that the district's ability to meet its financial obligations for current year and the next two fiscal years. So it documents the changes that occurred between budget adoption and October thirty-first. So I'm happy to report that Selma Unified has a positive certification, which means that we are able to meet the state requirement reserve of three percent, and we have a positive projection for the next two fiscal years. So that's what positive certification is, and again, that's what we're reporting tonight. This report, after it's board-approved, we will submit to Fresno County Office of Eds so that they can audit our information. And actually, we submitted a draft or, of our budget to them a couple of weeks ago in advance of this, just so they could take a look and, and, and comb through it, and maybe point out anything that we might have missed or needed to fine-tune. So they've already taken one look at it, they gave us some feedback, we made some slight adjustments, so we're pretty confident that we'll, we'll be fine when we submit it tomorrow. So looking at our revenues, we're showing for current year, a hundred and twenty-seven point five million dollars. Of that, we, seventy-two percent is from our LCFF. We have five point nine percent of our budget for federal, sixteen point three for other state, and five point five for local. So of our LCFF, so as you can see there, we get other funding besides our LCFF, but it is a significant amount of our budget. But of that seventy-two percent, thirty million is for supplemental and concentration. Those funds are related to the LCAP, and as we all know, they're, they're spoken for, they're kind of restricted dollars, and they are for restricted purposes. So that's our revenue. For expenditures, the bulk of our budget goes to salaries and benefits. We're at sixty-five point seven, excuse me, sixty-five point seven percent allocated for salaries and benefits. And then we have twelve point six percent going to books and supplies, nineteen point four for services and capital outlay, and two percent for other outgo, for a total of a hundred and forty-nine point eight million dollars. All right, so one of the biggest things that we show in the first interim is a multi-year projection. As I said, in order to get a positive certification, we have to prove that we can meet our fiscal obligations for current year and the next two years, so the, the way to do that is to do a multi-year projection. So these are some of the assumptions that we consider when we build out the MYP. And so for current year, we included the, the final negotiations, where we increased the health and welfare cap by a thousand dollars for twenty-four, twenty-five. And since we did have a three-year contract, we already know what we are going to do for twenty-five, twenty-six, and that is an increase to the salary of four point fifteen percent, and increase the health and welfare cap by two hundred and seventy-five dollars. So for twenty-six, twenty-seven, there's nothing included in the budget with regard to negotiations, because it'll open back up. But we do look at our staffing projections in current year and the next two years. We have, we're projecting approximately ten retirees in twenty-five, twenty-six, and that just, it, it provides savings there. So if you get your most tenured teachers are retiring, and then your year-one teachers come in, there's some salary savings there, so we account for that. We look at our ADA and enrollment projections, but on the benefits side, STIRS is actually pretty steady for the next couple of years, but our PERS increases are trending up, so we do incorporate that in our budget. As I mentioned, we include the COLA for, from the state governor's budget. Again, we're, we're hearing that twenty-five, twenty-six might drop about a percentage, and that could be significant for us, but we're just monitoring it right now and, and waiting to see what happens there. For twenty-four, twenty-five, we've included two point two million dollars, kind of conditioning the budget for the four point fifteen percent salary increase that we're going to have next year. So when we assign the dollars, it's just earmarking it, kind of preparing ourselves to kind of cover that in the next following year. So we did assign some, some funds for that. And then we transferred five hundred thousand dollars for our facility projects, fund four hundred for current year, and then for twenty-five, twenty-six, we also allocated an additional five hundred thousand for facility projects. We do have a resolution, if we are over our ten percent reserve, that we're able to look at transferring funds to our facility projects. So we were able to do that in twenty-five, twenty-six. We didn't quite make it in twenty-six, twenty-seven, so we didn't transfer any funding to the facility projects in that year. So this is what all of the assumptions translate to in dollars. So for twenty-four, twenty-five, we're looking at revenues, like I mentioned, a hundred and twenty-seven point five million, expenditures of a hundred and forty-nine point eight million, with a deficit of twenty-two point two million dollars, with an ending balance of sixteen point eight million. Once we take out the restricted and the assigned funds that I mentioned, that leaves us with thirteen point three eight million dollars for our reserves, which equates to eight point nine four percent. So it's almost nine percent in our reserves, so that's a really healthy amount. And twenty-five, twenty-six, we carry that over, we're looking at a deficit of three point one. The way it works for the out-years is we strip out all of the carryover dollars and all the one-time expenditures, and we look at what the actual operating budget looks like, and that's why there's a dramatic change. Again, we're assuming that we're going to spend every dollar that we have budgeted in twenty-four, twenty-five, which as we looked at in the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, that's not the reality of how the budget works. We know, we know we're going to have some funding go to our reserves at the end of the year, but this is again, assuming we spend every dollar. So in twenty-six, twenty-seven, we're also looking at a nine point two five percent in reserves. So this is the, this slide that shows the variances, the changes that have happened from adopted to now. So in our revenues, when we look at adopted to first interim, our revenues went up by a million dollars. Our expenditures went up by twenty-one point one million dollars. And so our deficit went up by twenty million dollars from adopted budget to first interim, and let's go over why that is. So for revenues, we did have a decrease in our LCFF. So at adopted, we were planning on getting more, recouping more of our ADA with Saturday School Programs and other initiatives that we had in the district. We were also pushing to get our, more students submitting their, their qualification forms for unduplicated percentage and things like that. There's a lot of different factors that go into the LCFF calculator, which is just one component, as we mentioned, of the entire budget. And so we did see a drop there, because we did not get the ADA that we projected, and our UPP came in lower than we expected as well. Again, these were all projections at adoption, and at first interim, that's when we have our first look at it. We had some increases in other revenues that offset the, the decrease in LCFF, one being deferred revenue. Deferred revenue is dollars from last year that are allocated to us, but we haven't earned them yet, meaning we haven't spent them. So they don't give us the, the revenue until we spend it. So that's why we're able to identify the revenue in current year, even though it's from last year, because there are certain funds that are deferred revenue. So looking at expenditures, the big bulk of all of the expenditures that are in here are from last year. So as I mentioned in the revenue for deferred revenue, there are funding that if we didn't spend it, they don't give us the money until we spend it. But then we have a large amount of funding that they gave us the, the revenue last year, but they're still letting us spend it in, in the current year. And so we don't get to bring forward the revenue, we bring forward the expenditures, because we're going to spend them in this year. We already reflected the revenue in last year, and so that's why there is that upside-down of looking like we have more expenditures than we do revenue, because we already received it last year. So we have LCAP carryover in there, ELOP, learning recovery block grant, art music block grant, these are all restricted, that are, have specific purposes, that we can't just spend on anything. These are student-focused funding that we have to spend on that. We had other restricted carryover there as well. And then also, when we look at our operation, operational budget, we take out all the one-time expenditures, because those are one-time, they're not reoccurring, so why would we account that in our expenditures? So some of those things, look, our, our HVAC, our CSEA retro was in there, we kind of took that out to kind of see where we really are. And so at the bottom there, it shows that our actual budget is a surplus of one point seven million dollars. So we're in good shape, and like I mentioned on our multi-year projection, we're at an almost nine percent reserve. So next steps, like, as I mentioned, Fresno County Office of Ed will audit our first interim report. So even after you approve it today, they will look at every page, every dollar, and we actually give them a summary of all of the things, all of the assumptions, everything that's happening in Selma, because even though they're county office, you know, they're not familiar with what we have planned and what we have going on. So once we, we kind of give a narrative to that effect, they go ahead and audit and make sure that it's appropriate and in line with a, a good budget. And then next month, we will bring you the twenty-three, twenty-four audit, so that's for last year's budget. And that's where our external auditors will come in and let you know how we did. Spoiler alert, they're going to tell you that we had no audit findings, so that's amazing news. So they're going to come in and tell you that for our twenty-three, twenty-four budget, we're all good on, on that front. So we do have a lot of oversight, we have Fresno County, we have external auditors that look at our budget and our operations to make sure we're running smoothly. And then in March, we'll come back with a similar report for second interim, looking at the same revenues, expenditures, and the multi-year projection. That's all I have, do you have any questions? That's a lot of information.
So our assumptions are ADA and also the COLA. So if the COLA is less for next year, this budget would get changed, right?
Yes, that's correct.
And if our enrollment is a decrease, and our reserve might comes down.
That's correct. There are a lot of different factors that our funding is contingent on, and it's enrollment, and it's ADA, it's the demographics of our students, it's a lot of different things. We get funding based off grade levels, so if we have less than a certain grade level that we get per, more per pupil, that'll drop. So the, the LCFF calculation that we have, there's a lot of different factors that affect our funding.
All right, now we have a new board members here, I'm trying to learning this for the last four years. Good luck to you, so. Yeah, it takes time, and this is one of the important roles of our board, so.
I've been learning it for twelve, and I'm learning every day, so.
Exactly. Is there any questions from the board? If not, may I have a motion?
I think Mark has a question.
Mark, go for it.
On the last, not the last slide, but the third slide from the last, the budget adjustments since July?
Uh-huh.
I'm thinking it might just be a way that you had to calculate, but over here on the adopted budget, you have a surplus deficit, it's showing the deficit. First interim, you should have the deficit. And you can technically add, or you take the top number, subtract the bottom number, you get the deficit, right? On the last one, you're showing a negative twenty thousand, but then down here, you're showing it as a revenue, oh, no, expenditure, but you're showing it as a surplus.
Yes, because once you take out last year's expenditures, all of the, it's basically saying, it's, it's explaining what accounts for that, and a lot of that is last year's expenditures, that we're budgeting and we're, we're hoping to spend this year. So once you take out last year's expenditures, and just look at our operational budget, it will be a surplus of one point seven. So it's just itemizing the things that belonged to last year to give you a true idea of current year. So if you take the twenty million dollar deficit, and you take out the twenty-one million in last year's expenditures, is where you get the surplus.
Okay, so this on the bottom here, the LCAP carrier, all these carriers are from the year prior. And that's where you're making these adjustments, okay.
Yeah, so when we looked at the summary of the unaudited actuels when we closed the books, in all of the different periods, we thought we were going to spend it all, but when we closed the books, a lot of the funding went to our reserves. And so, which is last year's funding that we get to spend this year. So it dropped to our reserves, and now that we're spending it, we're taking it back out of our reserves. It's, it's planned and expected.
Okay. I understand now.
All right, has that answered your question? Is there any other questions? If not, may I have a motion for this item? I make a motion for this item. Is there a second to it?
Second.
All favors say aye?
Aye.
Anybody pose? All right, we are moving into the notice of hearing, developer fee, public notice.
This is a public hearing, so we'll open up as a public hearing.
So, do you want to?
Do we have a representative?
I do. Do you want to open for a public hearing?
Yeah, it's a open, open for a public hearing meeting, so if anybody have any questions, would come up to the podium.
Okay, and so tonight, we have Ken Reynolds with Schoolworks, who's going to go over the developer fee presentation for us tonight, that's associated to this hearing. If we have no public comment, we can close the public hearing.
If there's no public comments, then we'll close for the public comments.
Thank you.
Good evening. We have a quick presentation to give you some highlights of the study we did this year and what some of the newest updates are in the developer fees. And so of course, developer fees are a common source of funding for your school facility projects, and so we'll sort of go through some of the planned uses of those dollars. Most districts throughout our state do collect level-one developer fees, and the state sets a maximum that school districts can collect or charge per square footage of new homes and new businesses that are built. And so in January of two thousand twenty-four, they set the rate at five dollars and seventeen cents for residential projects, and eighty-four cents for commercial projects. And they adjust that every two years to account for inflation in construction costs. And so this January increase was a seven point eight four percent increase compared to the prior two years. And so this graph here just gives you an illustration of how the rates have changed over the years. And as you had noticed, it's a pretty steady increase, but the last six years or so, the rate at which things have been increasing have been more significant, as there's been more inflation in school construction costs. And so we do this study typically every two years, sometimes every four years. The reason that we do it is to bring all of the data and analysis up to date. If we're, use assumptions that are no longer valid, then technically the study could be challenged, and so we want to make sure and use the latest and newest information. So we want to make sure and use your local yield rate, right? How many students are coming out of your homes in your district as compared to other areas in the state? We want to We want to understand how many homes are being built. Because the more homes that are built, the more impacts there are. And we want to make sure and account for the right capacity of your schools in our study. And we want to make sure we identify your planned uses of those dollars, what types of projects you're planning to do. Again, some of these items are listed here because the rules have changed over the years and these are the newest rules that we need to comply with. And so how do we calculate, right, what we can justify in fees? It's based on a lot of analysis and calculations. Some of the key components in those calculations are the average size of new homes that are built. Of course, all homes come in different sizes, but we do calculate the average for your district. And that came in at 1,743 square feet. The study's taking into account what the local land costs are, what your local modernization needs are, right? How old your schools are getting. One of the other key components is how many students do we see generated for each new home that is built? And for, in your district, that comes out to just over point seven students per home. And that's representing how many students end up in your schools out of those homes that are built. And another side note, it wasn't part of the study, but another analysis I was working on, by comparing census information to your enrollment information and how many children live in the community, our analysis shows that about 95% of the children within your community are enrolled in your schools. So that's a very high, what we refer to as a capture rate. And so the bottom line, after we go through all the analysis, the dollar amount came out to $8.20. Of course, we can't collect $8.20 because the state sets that maximum at 517. So our study does show that you're entitled to collect that maximum rate. Next, we'd like to remind you of those allowed uses of developer fees. These are level one developer fees. There is a higher level of developer, the level two fees. There's a lot more restrictions on level two fees. So, but the level one fees can be used obviously to build new schools if you're adding on to your existing schools. If you have some old portables or old facilities that need replaced, those are allowed uses. And one that's not quite as well known is modernization. Doing a modernization project and upgrading our existing schools so that they can continue to provide housing for students is an allowed use of just level one fees. That is not allowed for level two fees, though. And of course, if we need additional land or adding land to our existing sites because of growth, and of course, all the planning costs that come with facilities projects. So not just the construction costs, but all the planning costs that go into a project. And then of course, we want to talk about the timeline, the way these studies work after approval this evening. Your next item will be a resolution to approve the study and implement the new fees. There's a 60-day period before they go into effect. So that would be February 15th is when the new rates would go into effect. And then, as I mentioned earlier, the study does not technically have an expiration date. But once the assumptions and the data used are no longer valid, then it is time to update. And the most common practice is to do that every two years. And then as a side note, if we look at our estimated number of homes we're projecting to be built and multiply that by the new rates, that basically generates just under a million dollars per year in revenues. And then finally, I want to touch base. So there's been a lot of talk about SB 937, which was approved by our state and signed by the governor. That bill goes into effect January 1st, so just a few more weeks away. And the main point of that is to delay the collection of developer fees. It only applies to residential. It does not impact when you collect your commercial fees. There's still a lot of different interpretations of the true impact of that bill. But I think it's best to just assume that most of our residential fees will get paid when the buildings are occupied and not when the permits are pulled. And so again, it's, in my latest reading of one attorney's interpretation of the bill, they're saying that you can still collect when the permit is pulled for certain types of projects. And so then it becomes a situation of, you know, who's the authority to decide? Is this one that is exempt or not exempt from the delay in developer fees? So again, there's going to be a lot of details, I think, worked out during the first quarter of 2025. And then on this page, we just talked about that the amount that you collect, even though will be delayed when you collect it, it will be based on when the permit is pulled. And so if someone pulls a permit in January before your new rates go into effect, but they don't pay it till May, they're still going to pay the January rate. And then so we are recommending that the district should still review each project when the permit is being pulled. So the current process you have in place, currently someone comes and pays the fee when they want to pull the permit. In this case, if they qualify to pay it occupancy, you would still issue them basically an invoice or a bill and say, this is due upon occupancy, so that there's a record of the amount that they owe for that project and each project, so you have a record on your end. And so that is our presentation for this evening. I'd love to be able to answer any questions you may have.
So there is no increase on the developer fees for residential or is it stay same as $17?
517 is the new rate.
That's a new rate. What's the current rate?
It's currently at $4.79.
Oh, $4.79. I would have put the commercial 84. It was?
It's 84 and the previous rate. I think it's 79 cents right now.
Something like that.
Maybe 78, I think 78 right now.
So a couple of questions. So when they say residential, they're talking about like new single home, single family evolvements, right?
Correct.
So like apartments and duplexes and triplexes.
Yes.
Would those be considered residential? Or is that also residential?
Anything residential.
Because apartment, wouldn't that be a commercial, multi?
The owner will pay for it usually.
An apartment's considered residential because someone lives there. The, if it was a hotel where it's just, you know, single night occupancy, those are commercial projects.
So if a apartment is considered residential and under these new rules and guidelines, a person can make a 30-unit apartment and may not say anything's occupied until a half a year later.
Right.
Then what would drive the want to build single-family homes? Because you would save more money doing it that way than having a development trying to sell houses.
Well, there's just different markets for different types of projects. That's why we see all.
How's that new law?
All different, and there's different zoning for different areas. So that's what controls what the builders are doing.
Right, because the only thing I look at this is like, I know in the end, the developer will pay the money. But they're going to get that back by passing the cost on to the buyer.
Correct.
And if we want people in our town to be able to buy houses so they can set their roots down, they can get their mortgages, they become more in tune to what goes on with their kid's life because they're kind of, with a mortgage, you're kind of stuck for the most part. You don't want to raise the cost so much that it's hard for anyone here, any of the kids who graduate here to be able to buy a house. And California is really known for raising that up. I do like the idea of getting more money. It's always great. I'm just a little weary. Maybe I look at it differently.
Yeah, I completely understand that. Most boards have a challenge with saying, well, homes are always too expensive. Why are we raising our fees? You can talk with Jessica and anyone in any facilities department. Even though we're getting this slight increase in developer fees, it's not technically an increase. It's just trying to keep up with the inflation of what it costs to build your school facilities. And so the way that OPSC has provided funding for schools over time, we're actually losing money over time. So the amount of developer fees you get is not technically enough to, it's supposed to be enough to build 50% of a school. And the numbers are really coming in much less than that. Usually it's covering only maybe a third of the cost. And so we've actually lost ground over the years. And so, yeah, it's hard to get a grasp of how all these things interrelate. But this is our really important source of funding. I do know that once in a while, school districts will back away from collecting the developer fees. And to help offset that, they have to do more in terms of the local bonds, because that's another source of facility fundings.
I mean, we've, I see us do bonds, we did a bond.
Right.
And she is doing this.
Yeah, and the real plan, our statewide vision, when they developed this state building program and they develop a few regulations, was to have the three funding sources. The state building program, which you participate in, the local bonds, which you've participated on, and developer fees, which you're taking a part of. So those three sources combined are all a necessary component for taking care of our school facilities.
But I also see how this can go sideways. So for instance, the developer can come in and say, okay, I want to build 100 homes in this one area. Since now it's, they can pay it when it's occupied, from the day they pull the permit, at the permit rate. Let's say the project falls through. Those developer fees weren't paid upfront. What happens then?
There's different language in this new bill that talks about some different situations in terms of doing some types of bonds, basically insurance to guarantee that the district is getting the funds that they're entitled to. And so again, every situation is going to be unique. But again, it's a brand-new bill. They're still working through all the details on the best way to do the implementation.
All right.
Nick, I just wanted to answer your previous question. I got confirmation that the commercial is 84 cents.
Oh, 84 cents.
That's the new rate.
That's the new way, and it's gone up 6 cents.
So it was 78 currently?
Yeah, my one more question is that this additional money we're getting, you said allowed uses for level one developer fees. So we could, if we have it in the future, we're going to build another school or buy a land, we could use this money to sit on a side to buy that land? Is that correct? That's what they're saying?
Correct.
So maybe we need to look into the future. If we're going to develop something in the future, that might be the one of the sources for us.
Ken is our guy to talk projections. And I think he's done that, he'll be doing that every year to see, are we going to have enough bodies to allow?
Definitely.
Yeah, and the projections, there's enough development on the books. Eventually, I think you will need an additional new school. But it's really, it's a matter of the housing market when it becomes, you know, more active with the higher interest rates, again, the market slowed a bit. And now that they're starting to come down, we'll probably see things pick up.
So the question becomes this, or at least that's how I see it. If we do this now, then these increases go in when developer fees come, when developers come to build. But if our enrollment's going down currently and it's becoming too expensive to buy a house, then we're going to have decreasing enrollment even more soon. So, but if we don't do this and we keep it lower than competing districts, it becomes more enticing for developers to build here, which will bring in more families and raise up our ADA. And then we can go ahead and increase afterwards. So we have an upcoming ADA swing.
I think some of the projections that Ken has shared with us before is that not all just families are having less children in general. So even if they do purchase homes, doesn't equate to families and kids. So that's one thing to consider as well that I know Ken has shared before.
Are we actually adopting the raise or are we just adopting the study? Are we just saying, yes, we're accepting the study?
So the next item is a resolution to actually increase our?
To actually?
Yes. This is the information, giving you the background. And then the next item will be to actually approve the resolution.
Put it into, put it into effect.
Have we had any fees?
What's that?
Have we had any fees here in Selma?
Yes, actually. I think currently our budget's about $500,000 that we have. And this is dollars that we can only use for our facilities. And so it does help with that. As you know, we have a lot of needs in the district and so this is one of those buckets of funds that help us with that.
Yeah, .9 million is going to be the newer one.
That's if everything comes to fruition, if everything gets built.
More houses get built.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, this is good. All right, any more discussion?
When was the last time we adjusted these?
That would have been in 2022.
Yeah, I remember that.
Right.
Yeah, I was on the board.
It's every two years.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Resolution FY 25-26 in the matter of adoption of a fee justification study and an increase in a school facility fees and adoptions of a CQ notice of exemption.
Okay, so this is the resolution to actually put in effect the increase of developer fees permitted to be charged for any new construction within a district's boundaries. To levy the newly approved fees, the district must have a developer fee justification study to verify its eligibility to charge the new fees. The developer fee study confirmed the district can levy the fees as follows. $5.17 per square feet for residential and 84 cents per square foot for commercial.
Thank you. Is there any questions from the board? If not, may I have a motion for this item?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
All right, I second it. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Anybody pose?
I pose.
There's one pose and four yes. All right, we're going to move into consent agenda. Item listed under the consent agendas are considered to be routine and are acted on a board of trustee in one motion. There is no discussion of these items before the board, but unless the member of the board's staff or public, a specific item we discussed and/or removed from the consent agenda. It is understood that the administration recommended approval of all consent items. Each item on a consent agenda approved by the members of the governing board shall be deemed to have been considered in a full and adopted as recommended. Is there any item that needs to be discussed? If not, may I have a motion to approve this consent agenda items?
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'll second.
All right, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Anybody pose? All right, we're going to move into the board report. All right, we're going to start with Mr. Ferdo.
Wow, all right, whatever. I like it when you guys go first because I can remember stuff.
You can always, you can always fill in.
I can come back and amend it. You know, one thing, you know, we did go to the CSBA conference down south. That was a real foggy week here.
You've been there.
Yeah, yeah, even there. And I had an opportunity to visit a few school sites before we left. And I thank the people that I saw for being there. I appreciate you guys. I appreciate you guys all being there for our kids, everybody from custodians to food service, back there who's backing this stuff up. Everybody being there for the kids. It was really neat to see parents having a place to drop their children off that were going to be safe and taken care of. So that was cool. Thank you all for what you do. Did get to go to the football game in Palmdale. Amazing, fantastic. What a game. We didn't get the outcome that we probably wanted, but it was, it was, it was an amazing game. And the sportsmanship that I saw from our guys down there on the field, unbelievable. I can't say enough good about them. And I've heard it from other people too, so. I've got a lot of other stuff I'm sure that I'll remember while you guys are talking. But bottom line, hey, have a Merry Christmas, Happy- But bottom line, hey, have a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and that's what I got.
Thank you. All right, Mrs. Gester?
Well, I went to the Salma High playoffs in Delano, Moro Bay, and Palmdale. And they were a lot of fun. They were, one was very, very cold. Not that they weren't all cold, but one was extremely cold. And I had a, an opportunity to meet with HR and they explained what they do. I kind of knew what they do, but they had one thing I didn't know. So, so that was good. I attended an awards assembly at Eric White. I also went, you know, had, went to the CSBA conference in Anaheim for, from the fourth through the seventh. That was a long week. That was a long week. I attended the Heartland Sports Assembly. And, and also, I wanted to say that I had, I also attended the soccer tournament at Eric White, which I have to say, I see Yolanda back there. And stand up, Yolanda. Just stand up. This woman saved me. There was a, there was a, there was a ball, some kid kicked it and it was coming right at me. And she got up and she kicked it like a pro. Heels and all. She got up and kicked it like, oh, I said, sign her up. And anyways, also, it was brought to my attention that a teacher from Lincoln School, Kevin Mutsu, Metzuka, Metacola, is, did a state final football. He's a referee. And he did a state final football game. So that was, not everybody gets to do those. And anyways, I, I wanted to end with a little quote. Let me get it for you. This is for us and for everybody listening, for the board, for, to be coming up. And it is, be strong but not rude. Be kind but not weak. Be humble but not shy. Be proud but not arrogant. And with that, I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, happy holidays, and a very prosperous New Year for all of us.
Thank you. Mr. Medire?
Well, we went to CSBA. We went to a conference and I got to sit on a, a, what do we call it, seminar? I'm trying to remember the word for it. Essentially, it was a presentation on how to get funding for the arts. The main key word here was strategy. And so, I'll be taking some ideas I have and I'll be talking to Ed directly offline and see what we can do to kind of do a little bit more for the arts. We have a great band. We, I want to see some more stuff happening, bigger, better. We're seeing this happen for our sports teams, our football team, our wrestlers. We're seeing stuff being done there. I want to see stuff for the other side of the equation, which is the kids who are creative, the arts. You know, I want to see a little bit of that being pushed now. Aside from that, I want to thank the board in its totality for one great year. Last year, I've actually very well, very well handled decorum, the way we handle ourselves in the public, the way we handle ourselves professionally. We've done this for, what, two, three years now? We, me and Joel and, and I stay, I've only been here for, what, two years?
Yeah.
So, yep. And I was Stella, and I look forward to another great year of professionalism. And it's one thing to really make sure, and I, I say this lightly, or maybe not so lightly. But those of us in a position of leadership, we have a image to uphold because we don't just represent ourselves. We're representing our community. We represent the school board. But we also represent Salma. And we've seen stuff come up and wherever, wherever side you belong on, whatever thing, every way you think of it, the main thing is this, you must have decorum. You must remember what your job is. You are a servant. A transition of power should be taken in stride. If you win or lose, you take it in stride. You win graciously, you lose graciously. The transfer of power should never be used as a way to make a spectacle. I'm glad that we, as a board, do not do that. We're very professional in what we do, and that should be put out there for everybody to understand that when one group or one individual makes a scene in governance, a person who is in governance, it makes their entire community look bad, not just themselves. And what I saw in a prior meeting for another organization, kind of put that out there. If you want to be a leader, you have to lead. That means you must always be at your top of your game. We cannot afford to be absent when it's important. Like today, I'm here. About ten hours ago, I was going through something close to a heart attack. But I'm here because it's that important. And that's something that we have to relay. And like I said, I'd like to thank you guys for that because you guys do that. And one more thing, if you are a alumni of Salma High School, like today, was it today? It was actually yesterday, Mr. Moses class. They had alumni come down, talk with the students there. We need more of that. We need more success stories to come out there and let the students who are gradually know that there is things to do out there. And just like you're going to school, these guys went to school and they got there. So can you. So I'd like to thank that person that came down, and I'd like to thank you guys, and that's my report.
Thank you. That would be great. Mrs. Dorte?
Well, I want to say I'm so grateful to be here, and it's an honor to sit here with you as a board because you have been all so gracious in accepting me in as part of the group. We had a great time at CSBA. I know I have lots to learn from this side of the table. Although I have experience in education, I have no experience on what a school board and how it functions. And I'm learning that I have a lot to learn. I do want to say publicly and thank everyone who assisted in my campaign. There are a lot of folks that supported me, that provided financial support and canvassing support. Lots and lots of support. So I just want to thank everyone publicly. I do want to also publicly acknowledge the two unions that endorsed me, CSEA and the teacher, the teachers' union. So thank you. I appreciate your support. But I hope that I can represent our students, our families, and all of our staff well. And I, I hope that I can do that. And I want to share a personal note. I teared up a little bit with, in my oath, when seeing my mother. But I just want to state that, you know, we, all our families do face challenges. But I want to publicly acknowledge my mom, who raised us, as a single mom since I was seven years old. And so, just to see her here, she did a great job in raising all three of us. And I just hope that I do her proud and our community proud. Thank you for the opportunity.
Yeah. Thank you, Stella, and welcome to our board. And we're looking forward, working with you as our team members. And I hope that you bring lots to our school district and really appreciate it. And you will learn it, what sort of the board roles are. And I'm pretty sure CSBA, you took some classes out there and what do they tell us? For me, and CS, CSBA was really good. The opening session was really good. I learned a lot from it, you know, from that psychologist, the PhD that she got from Harvard University. And she said, actually meant to be the teachers and everyone's, that be happy, you know, and keep a good health and a, be respectful to the others and use kind words. That, that would make my days to start. So I really learned that, you know, try to be, stay on that, focus on it. But anyway, we, we've done a lot of good things and this year. And same thing, wishing everyone's Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. And as we look at to twenty twenty-five, I want to extend my heartfelt gratitude to the staff, teachers, for their hard works and dedications. A special thank you to the parents, the community, for placing their trust in the Salma Unified School District Board. Thank you. Moving to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Yes, I also want to say thank you for the CSBA, you guys coming out there and really focusing in on workshops to really learn some of the things that are happening in California at this time. It's not easy. You have to be away from your families and your jobs. That's a double duty, along with everything else you guys have done, from MIG trainings to retreats to all these board meetings. We appreciate your service. Thank you. Tonight, I want to highlight our incredible success this year with, and so many of you guys know this, the Jeter and Scout Angel Tree Program. This year, we received a record-breaking four hundred and fifty gifts for students in need. Our highest number, highest number to date I hear. I want to thank everyone who's supported this effort by donating. Thank you. From people here in this room, employees, to students even, and community members. Thank you. I give a special thank you to Kristi Rangel for organizing this program every year and really taking charge of it. And I'd also like to, a special thank you to Sun Maid for a huge generous contribution, which made a significant impact on this year's Angel Tree, uh, Angel Tree Program. So thank you to them. It's truly inspiring to see our community come together and support our students this way. Last week, we hosted the elementary boys' soccer tournament, and congratulations to Wilson for coming in first place, Garfield in second, and Eric White in third. Elementary girls' tournament was postponed due to rain and is rescheduled for the thirtieth of January. This week, our elementary school winter programs are in full swing. For dates and times, please visit the calendar for you guys to see. I know there was Wilson already, and there'll be others this week. You might see me out there as I try to pop into all of them. And as mentioned tonight, our ELOP winter session begins Monday, December thirtieth. The program will reserve, resume on Thursday after New Year's Eve and New Year's Day. There will not be class, just so you guys know. Thank you for all the students who put the effort in to making it every day. And finally, a quick reminder that there is just three days left until winter break. There is no school from December twenty-third to January twelfth. And classes will resume on Monday, January thirteenth. I encourage everyone to take these next three weeks to rest, recharge, and enjoy the holiday season with their loved ones. Thank you for all the hard work and dedication they've shown throughout this first half of the school year. I wish everyone to be safe, happy, and joyful this holiday season. Thank you.
All right, that was a great. Thank you. And anything else, Lisa? Any, any words from you?
I want to say one more thing. One more thing that I forgot. Just want to welcome Stella to our, our, our board. She worked hard for it.
Well, thank you. And we're going to adjourn this meeting and then we're going to open back to the closed session. All right, may I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, we're going into the closed session. We're going in a closed session right here in five minutes.